We have all board members present, meeting is called to order. Let's please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. So we'll now move to our student council from Columbia. We have Katie and Ryan. I see both of you. Hi, guys. How you doing?
Hi.
Good, loud and clear.
We just have a really brief update tonight. So this winter, student council, we decided at our last meeting, we're going to focus on charitable events. So last week, we set out a poll for of different fundraising ideas for members to vote on. And we went over those results at our meeting after school today. And we've decided to focus on raising money for the Make-A-Wish Foundation and to have a collection for local animal, a local animal shelter or the ASPCI. So Ryan is going to explain some of our ideas for the.
Yep, we're also going to have, or we're discussing having a candy bar or a hot chocolate sale to raise money for those charities. But we're looking into if we're able to do those with coronavirus restrictions. And Goff just finished up with a food drive, so we're also planning to have one later in the year.
Great. Anything else? Guys are doing good. How was virtual exam week?
It went well.
Went well? Excellent. Yeah, I heard positive things, so I think that went, could be back though, right?
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks, guys. Have a good one.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to the public forum of our board meeting. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations in the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protection, it must be stressed that the visitors forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited to be cleared out of order. So as we have during the virtual meetings, we have a public email address that is set up for our committee members to email us. That email is typically monitored by Ms. Wager, and she, are you logged on?
I'm logged in.
Logged in, and there are no public comments at this time. Okay, very good. And the, those members of the public who may be watching the meeting can have another opportunity to address the board via email later on during the second public forum. So with that, I will go to the board forum and superintendent report. We'll start with our board members. As I see on the screen, then we'll move to the in-person folks. So I'll start with Mark, Mark Mann. You're good. Joanne Taylor, I see you, Joanne. You're good. Kathleen Curtin. Thumbs up. Thank you. Jennifer Massey. Jennifer's good. And Michelle Skamerski. Michelle, good. And John Dunn. John Dunn's good. All right. And am I right, Deanna? You're good. And Frank? Very good. Okay, and I don't have anything at this time. Lot of agenda items, discussion, lot of things happening in the district and in the community that we need updates on, so we'll get right down to business. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Simons for the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Bino. I want to welcome members of the community and our members of the board to the public board meeting this evening. We do have a lot of topics to talk about. We wanted to take an opportunity to provide the community, in particular, our board, students, and parents with information about what is happening related to recent announcement that occurred at the state level that our districts are permitted to operate winter sports, including high-risk sports. Up until now, we have only been operating bowling for our girls and our boys on a virtual basis, but last Friday, this past Friday evening, it was announced that the governor would permit schools to operate what the state has classified as high-risk sports, such as basketball, wrestling, indoor track, cheerleading, and some sports that East Green Bush currently doesn't offer, such as swimming. The criteria established by the state of New York indicates that the county health departments with jurisdiction within the area of a school district really has the final determination as to whether or not schools would be permitted to do this. So the state's approval is subject to the permission of the county. And during the past several days, Mr. Leonard, our athletic director, and myself have been preparing and planning for the operation of sports subject to the approval of the county. There are some challenges and complications related to the way that the state has approved this option for our student athletes. In our district, for example, we compete in the suburban council league. And our suburban council league is made up of school districts from not just one county, Rensselaer County, but four counties. Schenectady County, Albany County, Saratoga County, and Rensselaer County. And each respective county department of health has to approve the operation of high-risk winter sports in order for our league to fully function. So Mr. Leonard has been discussing the planning with the respective athletic directors from each of the districts that compete in the suburban council, and I have been in discussions with each of the superintendents of the districts and the suburban council about how we would go about operating our sports in the event that those four respective counties approve them. As of this afternoon, at a meeting I had with Rensselaer County Executive Steve McLaughlin and Rensselaer County Health Director Mary Wakunas, the counties have not resolved their differences regarding whether or not they will approve the operation of winter sports and what criteria they would apply to make that determination. So there is disagreement among the counties as to whether this will happen and what criteria will be used to determine that school districts are permitted to proceed with sports. The difficulty that I feel regarding this is as the superintendent, and I'm sure many superintendents feel this way. We want to see our students engaged, and we recognize the importance of engagement for our kids, particularly now as we have been dealing with higher levels of confinement of our students because of the limited social activities. And we have only been able to offer one sport this winter, and we are offering virtual extracurricular clubs, which we believe are important for the students. So the announcement that sports could happen or might happen, got some kids excited about it, and some parents are really advocating for it. And I would like to see the kids out there. However, this, the determination is, does not solely rest with the superintendent of the district nor our Board of Education. So we still have some ways to go over the next few days to know whether or not we would be permitted to offer winter sports. There are some differences in views among our county departments of health. They are trying to reconcile those differences. And we were told this afternoon that there's an ongoing effort to see what could be done. As we read different announcements from different areas of the state as to whether or not they're permitting it, in some cases they are, in other cases they're not. So as an advocate for the kids, our board will continue to review this matter. We will be discussing it further this evening. And at this point, I want to ask Mr. Leonard to talk about the work that the suburban council athletic directors have been doing really since last Friday night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday through today, the athletic directors have been working on this in anticipation of it happening and what safety and health protocols would need to be in place. I will say before I introduce Mr. Leonard, our fall season went remarkably well. And I could not have been more proud of our student athletes, our athletic director, Mr. Leonard, our coaches, and our parents of the job that we did in East Green Bush School District of operating our sports programs safe. It was a great reflection on everybody within the community. The difference as we move into today, the infection rate is still higher, and that is causing the counties to have concern, and no one was prepared for this announcement that came on Friday. We were thinking we would get through the decline that we're experiencing now in the cases that resulted from the holidays. And most of us were thinking about and hopeful that spring sports would occur. So this caught the county by surprise and the school, caught the school districts by surprise, and we've been working through it. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Leonard to talk about the development of the guidelines that is occurring right now in accordance with what the state is asking us to do regarding the operation of sports. Mr. Leonard?
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? Yes, no? Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it was kind of a bombshell that got dropped six o'clock on, or four o'clock last Friday. And seeing that I had the lovely job of being suburban council athletic director president this year out of all the years. I came back up to school Friday night, and we had a subcommittee. We worked for a couple hours Friday night, Saturday, about six, seven hours, Sunday for about 10 hours. And developing guidelines, criteria, duties and responsibilities similar to what we did with the fall. I want to chime in what Mr. Simon said. I'm extremely proud of our student athletes, our parents and coaches this fall. We didn't have any issues. A few other suburban schools, you know, struggled a little bit with a couple teams, but we got through the entire season and it's a reflection of what type of people we have. So basically in your packet, you have something called the Suburban Council Athletic Athletic Standard Operating Procedures for Winter High-Risk Sports 2021. Basically, we take all the documentation of New York State interim guidance for sport recreation from NISVA, which is the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, we turn to NISVA Athletic and as well as some other guidance we research, we, from NISVA, as well as section two. So basically, we put together a kind of a playbook, so to speak, of how our league's going to operate. And I want to, it's very critical that all 15 schools are on the same page. So if we have teams going to Shen, the same expectations, safety protocols and procedures are the same, whether they come to Columbia, you go to Shen, you go to Shaker. So that's very critical for the safety, the continuity of the programs. From this fall, I'm not sure if anybody's, you know, we created badges for, you know, two guests, two spectators. We taped our bleachers, we had contact tracers. So it's the same thing here at Columbia as well as other suburban schools. I'm just going to kind of quickly go through a couple of different general considerations. We all use a health screening. So every single day, a student athlete will come to a practice, whether they're an A student or a B student, or a fully remote student, believe it or not, can participate in athletics. They will get a daily health screening. We have a log, we have a checklist, and they also get a temperature check. Or asked the similar questions. And those logs are handed in to me after each week. We double check them, and we keep them, and we file them. So we're doing daily health screenings, which I think is very important. Some other general considerations. Masks are always, this winter, except for the, the, the sport of wrestling. And I'll get to wrestling, but masks are required at all the time. So for example, if you're playing boys' basketball, you are wearing a mask all the time. The only time that you wouldn't be wearing a mask was during a play, and the mask is knocked off your face. The play will be finished. As soon as the play is finished, the ball is dead, the whistle blows, that athlete will have to put their mask back on. So masks are on and up the entire time. And in the fall, if a student athlete or a parent deemed it was not as tolerable, they had the option of pulling it down and putting it back up. Section two just came out that if a student athlete feels that it's not tolerable, they now have to provide a medical documentation and provide that to the school why it's not tolerated. I could tell you this fall, we had a great success of our student athletes listening. I went around numerous times right in the beginning and just told the students to, if we're going to have success, you have to wear your masks. Took a couple of days, but I was proud to watch cross-country meets, soccer games, field hockey, you name it, our kids wore the mask because they realized the success of playing and continue to play was wearing masks. Our coaches did a super great job. And what I like about our winter coaches, that kind of them coaching the fall, so they're familiar with a lot of the procedures. I'm going to quickly just talk about a couple of sports, give some highlights of examples that we came up with. So for example, in basketball, in your basketball, I'm not sure if it's, I think it's in your packet, but you all, I'm not sure if it's diagram, but that's a diagram I'll be working off of. Basically, we're almost to the NBA, where instead of having a straight long bench of 15 to 20 chairs side by side, they're going to be staggered back in rows, six feet apart, going back, going back. Each chair is labeled. For example, if I'm on the basketball team, I have a chair that is named, it's a, it's, has a name plate that says Mike Leonard. So if I am in the game, no one's sitting in my chair. If Mr. Simons is on the team and there's a chair that says Jeff Simons, he comes in for me, I can't go sit in Jeff Simons' chair. I have to go report Mike Leonard's chair. In my six by six cube, I have my water and my personal bag belongings. The score table, normally we have the scorekeeper, the announcer, and the two people that take the book, the home book and the away book. We will only have the announcer and the scoreboard person, and then we'll have to set up side tables for each home and away scorekeeper that are six foot away. We will have now an officials table that is behind. The officials used to leave their, you know, jackets, their water on the score table. That no longer will be. They'll have their own designated table six feet beyond the floor where they can leave their personal items, their water. Also on our score table, because it's that sport, there'll be Clorox wipes, extra mask, because during a basketball game, we found this out in the fall. You know, a lot of kids, you know, their mask would break, the string would break. We have individual masks wrapped in baggies that we provided, and it worked out great. So we always have extra masks at practice and at games. So each coach will receive hand sanitizers, big ones, the small, little portable hand sanitizers, a temperature gauge, baggies, gloves, towels, disinfectant spray. So all those things will be at every game, and all those coaches have those things. And we have throughout the athletic wing, there's a ton of hand sanitizer station that, that we've had since the fall. So those are some of the things, particularly like in basketball. In a basketball game, after the first quarter, that basketball is taken out of the game, and a new clean basketball is brought into the game. And you would do that after the first quarter, second quarter, halftime, third quarter, and obviously at the end of the game. So you're constantly trying to clean that equipment and turn that over. So that's just a couple of highlights with basketball. In basketball practice, I just want to talk about practice. We had a lot of success within our practices. Our coaches will develop cohort groups. So for example, they say there's 15 boys on the team. Myself and Jim McHugh would be partners pretty much the whole entire year, and we would be assigned a basket. So we would, our, our two will be partners for shooting drills, for defensive sliding drills. So really, a small little cohort might be me and Jim McHugh. And then another cohort might be, you know, John Dunn and Mark Mann at another basket. So this way you can track it, who's together for a period of time. So, you know, we were, we've done a great job of developing small cohorts. Same thing, you know, in, in indoor track, we'll have groups. So it'll be all the throwers, all the shot putters. Chris Dietrich's our throw coach. So he would have boys and girls that throw the shot put together. That's a cohort group. Chris Ozzie does a lot of the jumping events, highlight, a high jump. So he would have that group as a cohort group. So it's easy to track those kids are together. Obviously, in basketball, you're going to be doing some scrimmaging, so you'll have an opportunity for those kids that will be together as a whole. When those kids are out of the game or not in the scrimmage or not in the drill, they're on the sideline, six feet apart. Again, everybody has their mask on. I just want to quickly talk about, we do have ice hockey. It's a merger program with Shaker, Avro Park County and Tamarack. Right now, all five schools, as Mr. Simon says, are waiting and pending their DOH approval. Mr. Simon's also mentioned that a few county health departments are all into that. So also Naval Park of Rensselaer County, Shaker County or Albany County. So that may impact ice hockey. If, you know, Rensselaer County gets the green light and Albany County doesn't. So we may, that may impact hockey. Hockey has their own set of rules. They show up to the rink ready to go, and they carry their skates. Thirty minutes before their practice, they change in the skates, and they get on the ice. Nice thing about hockey is a lot of equipment, total face, ball padding. So there's a lot of protective, it's not a, and there's also internal face shield. And a lot of them now wear a mask, which they've been doing now for ice hockey inside. So that's also another protected with ice hockey. Let me quickly talk about cheerleading. All these practices will be spread out for our district using Columbia, Goff, and Green Meadow. Our cheerleading program traditionally has been at Green Meadow. They'll continue to be at Green Meadow. They'll probably go four to seven, 7:30. The JV team will practice. The JV team, or JV coach and the varsity coach will clean the cheerleading mat and then the varsity team. Same thing. It's a small cohort. It's that group. All cheerleading competitions are virtual. There'll be, hopefully, there'll be four Saturdays. And the county is our league chairperson. And Saturdays will do a virtual cheerleading meet, and the three judges will actually watch our, our live competition from Green Meadow, and they'll judge it. And some of those things have been going on for quite some time. Again, indoor track, when it's nice out, and it hasn't been too bad of a winter, we're outside. Just like we were in the fall with cross-country, we're outside, we're socially distant, masks are up. The track has been cleared, you know, except for today, but for the most part, we'd be outside a lot. If they're inside, it's small cohorts. Like I said, with like the throwers, there'll only be like 20 in that group and 20 in the high jump. That's all that would be in the gym. And maybe another group might be up in the the sunshine hallway running. So they're all different groups. The whole track team's never coming together unless they're outside, socially distant, and we could do that. Wrestling, there's a lot of different challenges to wrestling, and I thought we did a great job in this diagram coming up with a lot of different things. Obviously, with wrestling, it's very difficult to avoid physical contact as well as wearing a mask. But within wrestling practice room, you would have same thing like training partners. You would have one or two training partners. Those partners were the only ones you'd be training the whole entire year. Then within our wrestling room, we normally have, it's called wrestling circles. And it's part of wrestling. So what you would do is just spread them out. You would have two to three guys at one circle, skip a circle, two to three guys, so they're socially distant. Again, small cohort group in wrestling. One thing I want to bring up is that not a lot, a lot of schools are on the fence with wrestling, and a lot of schools feel that a weekly testing is mandatory for participation in the sport of wrestling. I'm not really sure about our capability of testing. And who would test it? They, the, the big wrestling guys in our league that are athletic directors thought the morning of a match, they would be tested. It's a quick rapid test they would take to determine if a positive result comes out or not. Those are some things about wrestling. But we've, like I said, we've been meeting since Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all, all the time, just trying to come up with a great document, working document that all the schools and all of our student athletes be on the same page, the same expectations. And I think that's very important, that everybody is doing the same thing, and the, and the standard is the same thing. I'm not sure if anybody has any questions, or Mr. Simons, you need me to cover anything?
One of the things, one of the things I just want to emphasize is going back to the fall. As we talked with other districts outside the suburban council, we were reminded of how good the suburban council, what good, what a good a job they did. They had the same standards for both teams in place at every contest, and it was very consistent. That was not necessarily the case in some of the other leagues. So I, we were really proud of that. I guess I, Mike, I'd just like to open up an opportunity for anybody on the board to express their questions or concerns right now, and we'll do our best to try to answer them.
Okay. Feedback from board members, Kathleen?
I kind of hate to be the, the wet blanket here, but there was a news story on just at six o'clock that Albany County has said that their schools will not be participating in the high-risk sports. They have chosen to follow CDC guidelines, which wants your infection rate below 4%, and then Albany County, it's still above six. So I don't know. I, I feel so bad because obviously a lot of work and a lot of thought has gone into this. So I don't know if there's any wiggle room with the counties. I, like I said, that's just what I heard at six o'clock.
At our meeting, at our meeting this afternoon, we were told by Rensselaer County that that 4% index was being advocated for by some of the other counties, and that our county was not in agreement with that. So we were also advised that they were, they would be working together to try to resolve their differences regarding that, and that we would expect perhaps to hear more information by Saturday. So what you're, what's being reported is inconsistent with what we said. I'm not, I'm not, I believe it's probably true. But again, that would, if that is the case, that would affect Gilderlin's participation, Albany City Schools' participation, Shaker High School, North Colony's participation, and South Colony's participation, and Bethlehem's participation.
And CBA.
And CBA. So those are six schools that if what's being reported is accurate, would not be able to participate in the suburban council. One thing that has been discussed is could you operate a league or an organization of some kind with the teams that are in the counties that do approve it? And there's a real question about whether or not districts should do that, whether boards would support us operating differently than other districts, and it's still an open question. So, so for example, Troy, Avro Park, and East Green Bush are all in Rensselaer County. If Rensselaer County decided that they supported the operation of sports and they weren't applying a 4% infection rate threshold, could we do something with Troy and Avro Park? And I don't, I honestly haven't fully formulated my own views on that. And you know, that, that would allow the kids to participate to some degree, nor do their superintendents know how their boards feel about that as well. But we've talked about the concept, but not in any kind of detail. We were hoping that our county health departments could work together to come to consensus, and it's disappointing, quite frankly, that they can't.
Just to jump back in, if, we're supposed to start this Monday, the first, and it was going to be a six-week season. So basically, everything except wrestling needs six practices. Wrestling needs 10 practices. So basically, they're going to practice for about a week if we're going to start. We had a, we started working on schedules last night and today, trying to get, you know, 11, 12 games for everybody. Another big question was spectators. We felt as athletic, a group of athletic directors, we were going to start with no spectators because it's inside, and we really wanted to get everything going first to ensure safety, to troubleshoot, and then phase spectators in, similar to like, you know, two, two guests per player. Socially distant, contact trace as they come in the door, assigned seating, you know, but to do that right away, we're going to get, you know, the games going. There's a lot of moving parts in a game, and so we wanted to kind of hopefully phase in spectators. Prior to phasing in, we would definitely honor and have a senior night. I think that's important. We would have two guests per. Um, we would have two guests per player, similar to what we did last spring. I did a senior night, even though we didn't have spring sports, um, and it worked out great. Uh, but I would, I think that's very important to do that. So say you had four, uh, boys that were seniors on the basketball team. I would have eight parents socially distant on the other side in chairs, wearing masks, you know, to, to do that honor. I think that's important.
Mark, anything? I saw something pop up on your screen, Mark.
I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, uh, two questions. One is, so if Rensselaer County doesn't give us approval, today's Wednesday, we got Thursday, Friday, then the weekend. We can't start anything February 1st, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And, and secondly, great plan, Mike, a lot of effort, I appreciate it. I'd like to hear from, um, Paul Bickel on, you know, what is the procedures for cleaning? It's one thing to go wipe down a classroom. You know, now you're talking a large gymnasium and the large wrestling rooms. Do, have we addressed those? Um, is that going to involve some extra people? You know, if, what time do these sports end? You know, are we going to have to bring in additional people to work late to, to disinfect them rooms?
Can you guys? Everybody here?
Yeah, I think.
Yes.
Think Paul's out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we follow a little.
Sorry.
Speak up.
Um, Mark, to answer your question, I've been working with, uh, Jim Vinburen at the high school. We're looking into, um, options, how we're going to go about this. Um, right now we've got typically there's a night per, or two night people that work the third shift. One of them is pulled up on to the 3:30 to midnight shift right now. So we're talking about putting him back to the night shift, um, the overnight shift to help with the cleaning and disinfecting at the high school. And, um, that we're also going to, um, put another gentleman who works on, who's working Monday through Friday right now, um, during a normal situation. He actually worked on Tuesday through Saturday shift. So we're going to end up putting him back on that shift. Um, bringing a substitute in to cover on Mondays for him. And we're actually doing a little bit better on substitutes right now. So, um, we're still kind of playing out the, you know, how we're going to do it exactly. Um, kind of waiting for athletics plan, um, before we react totally. We need to know, you know, when end times will be for sports so that we can, you know, make sure we have the right amount of time built in for, for the cleaning and disinfecting. So we are, we are looking into it and, um, following closely and working with the athletics department to, to make sure that things will be taken care of properly.
Thank you, Paul.
So for example, Mark, real quick to answer your question, um, the chairs, uh, and the basketball for a game, the JV might play. Uh, last time Sean Leggett and we had one of my supervisors, we sprayed down the chairs, cleaned them, and then the varsity came in. Uh, after the game, you know, Sean Leggett and one of my game supervisors did it. It worked out extremely well. Um, a lot of other schools are using, I think it's called the, I don't know, the fogger, I guess. I'm not sure if that's the right word, um, to clean wrestling rooms, weight rooms, uh, if you use bleachers. Um, you know, basketball courts, they just drive the machine, which they do now, the big, you know, it looks like a golf cart, but it's a, it does mopping. It's like a squeegee. You know, he was just down the hallway right now. You would just do that in the basketball court too. And that helps with the disinfected solution.
Yeah, and one, one more thing, if I can just interject, we are in a much better place right now as far as actually having the chemicals we needed to disinfect and having the tools to do it. Um, when we made that large purchase of the, the misters in the fall, those, um, originally we only had one of those in the district and it was at the high school. And it was used mainly for athletics because they work great. You can walk into a room and literally just mist everything and disinfect it. Uh, you know, so the, those, now that we have the capacity with those plus the people that we need, I, I don't think it's going to be any issue taking care of the, the bigger spaces for, for sports that do end up opening up.
And then by utilizing Green Meadow, Columbia and Gotham, um, and with less levels, the only levels we're looking at having to really do it is varsity and JV for boys and girls basketball and cheerleading. Wrestling would be at, uh, a varsity level. And, uh, indoor track, basically a varsity JV and they'll, they'll do virtual meets as well. Uh, Gillen and Shen have already started some virtual indoor, our indoor track meets. Um, you know, if the track is nice, the weather's nice, they go out and do some hurdles, some sprinting. They time their guys and they kind of compare scores. That's what we do right now with bowling. It's all virtual. So we have a bowling match. And then our coach takes our scores and calls up the Shaker coach and they compare scores to who, who's first, second, third, and who won the bowling match. So we did that, uh, we do that now with swimming. We did that, um, in the fall with swimming. And, uh, with cross country, we staggered it. They didn't run against other schools. Cross country, our team ran, uh, and then the other team ran in cohorts. And we just merged the scores and find out, you know, first, second, third, so on and so forth.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions for, for Mike or, uh, Jeff, Michelle? Go ahead, Michelle.
So, so two questions. Um, first is, do we have any concerns that we're crossing over cohorts? Meaning we got the high schoolers going to the elementary school or middle school to practice. Is, are we, are we nervous about that? Should we try to keep them separated and the high schoolers with the high school? I know we don't, might not have room at Columbia, but I don't know if that causes more risk that we're, might be contaminating an elementary school. Um, and then second of all, and don't shoot me on this, but is there a possibility that we consider testing these kids or mandated testing, uh, the participants weekly or is that not allowed?
I'll answer the second question about testing first, and then I'll let Mike talk about the coordination of the schedule and whether or not the kids would be, yes, they'd be using the space, but they wouldn't necessarily be in the building at the same time. The, um, the issue of testing has been discussed both within our Questar superintendent's group as well as along the suburban council superintendents. The type of testing that we're approved to do right now through Questar BOSI's is, uh, specifically licensed to, uh, respond to a designation that we are in a yellow, orange or red zone. And not approved for use, um, for, um, for, um, surveillance testing or, or, uh, and we've been trying to navigate through that through Craig Hansen to get some clarity as to how we might be able to use this supply of tests that we've, we've, uh, procured. And, um, whether or not it makes sense to do that, uh, on some intermittent basis or random basis as far as sports are concerned. Uh, some districts feel strongly that we shouldn't do it. Uh, some feel that it's a good idea. Uh, I think it's a good idea if it helps, uh, facilitate the engagement of the kids. But we don't have clear direction on or guidance on how we would do that. I raised that issue with the county health department director today. Uh, I, testing was one of the areas that we were told was going to be explored and talked about as a potential option between the counties. And again, that was a meeting at noon this, noon this morning. So I, I'm open to some type of testing. If we can do it based on, uh, health department guidance. And obviously if it enables the kids to play, because I'd like to see the kids playing. As far as counseling and intermixing with the elementary and middle school levels, typically we do have practices after the elementary kids are dismissed. Correct, Mike?
Yeah, so Michelle, to answer your question, for example, at Green Meadow, earliest that cheerleading would start would be four o'clock.
So we, we won't have time, Mike, to clean the gym to get them ready for it? Or is that, will that already be done? I'm just worried about the timing of all the cleaning.
I, I, I think they're just going to go to the gym and I'm, I'm not worried about the contamination. They're going to go in, roll that, roll out their cheerleading mats. No one else is going to be using them. The elementary school is not going to be using them. And, uh, they'll use their cheerleading mat. And then after the JV practice, they're going to get wiped down. The coaches can do that or spray down. And then after the varsity, they'll spray it down again because you want to put it away dirty. And then they'll roll it, roll it up and place it against the, um, the wall. They would use, the, uh, the team would only use, because you can't have, you know, six people going to the bathroom. They would use the bathroom that's kind of near Coach D's office. That would be designated, uh, bathroom for cheerleaders. So this way it's not down around the cafeteria where, you know, little kids might have been. Or may, you know, I don't know if GCC's even there, but, um, it would be very distant and very spread out. And they would have a designated bathroom. Uh, and then this way, at the end of the night, custodian or maintenance can clean that bathroom.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
One of my concerns about testing is would we be able to get more tests if we run out of the supply that we ordered for the, you know, the eventual required testing that we were anticipating? I would want to know that we could be, uh, given sufficient number of, of tests. And, uh, to make it, to make it sustainable.
And, and some parents may not want to have their kid tested, but you know, if it was up to me and I could have sports on if I got them tested, by all means, test them.
The concept we talked about was taking the student athletes who are already in the pool of families who consented to the test, clarifying with the families that they want to, uh, that we can go ahead and do it. And then, um, moving forward on it. Again, it's, it's having the approval to do it and having sufficient supply of the tests to do it. And how do you do it with direction from the county in a way that it has some validity to it? Um, were, were my questions. But yeah, we're, we're, uh, we're not opposed. I'm not personally opposed to that.
And I think a lot to remember is this, this only came out Friday evening, as Mr. Leonard said. And we're, we're going to get more information and guidance because there's a lot of districts across the state that are asking the same questions. I, I do want to echo what Mark said about thanking the team for all the work that's been done. I think the section will help out with this. I know that, um, it really, the, the guidance has given the authority to the local health departments, the county health departments. And without those written guidance, you know, I'm all for proceeding based on the success we've had. And, but without those approvals in place, we're not doing anything. I mean, I think that has to be clear to the community, unfortunately, that, you know, that they have now the authority to decide what, how we move forward. Our job is to plan, prep and be ready for when that happens. And, um, so we can give our student athletes' families an opportunity to, to participate, uh, as Mike has outlined here. And, and I think the district has done, uh, a terrific job in the fall, as you mentioned, um, tonight, about being successful with our sports programs, um, so far this year. And, you know, just thinking back throughout graduation, all the different things we've done. We are, number one is always going to be the safety of our students and our families. And we can make those things happen. We just have to make sure that the, uh, the people who can give us the okay, give us the formal okay and, and we can proceed, um, under that. Because we don't want to put anybody else in jeopardy either. But it's going to take a lot of cooperation, definitely. Is there any other views that could be expressed? John?
I just wanted to make a comment that, um, I am supportive of this concept of trying to bring back some normalcy to these kids, um, and giving them opportunities to be active. Because, um, unfortunately, during this pandemic, you're, there, everybody's becoming complacent and lethargic. So, uh, thanks to Mike and Paul and everyone that put this together. Again, we have to just, uh, be mindful that we're here to support the entire, um, education and experience for the students in a safe manner. So I am supportive of exploring this further.
And another comment I want to make, and I think that it's important to make a distinction. School districts as a public agency, a public entity have a, we are held to a higher standard. I know that there are other club, other sports are happening out there. We know that, but they're not under our jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction, um, our oversight comes from the state and the local health departments. And then, you know, we have to follow the guidance and, and that, that we are given. And, uh, as much as that is difficult, when we know that other sports are happening in rec and other areas um, outside the school jurisdiction, um, we still have an opportu, uh, uh, we're duty bound to do the right thing by, by the guidance. So it's a, it's a conflict, I know, for a lot of families who, who want to do this. But, uh, we'll proceed as best we can, uh, once we have clearance and approval and, and the superintendent and the board is satisfied that all the approvals have been met. Thank you, Mike. That, that's somewhat up for folks, all right? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Appreciate all the work, Mike. Stay at it. I'm sure things will change and, uh, you'll, you'll brief us again, uh, as things happen.
Yes, thank you. Before I leave, I just want to let you know, one of our, uh, former athletes, Selena Lot, scored her 1,000 points at Marquette, becoming the 30th in school history. And it's unbelievable accomplishment by Selena. It's unbelievable in, in Marquette's, uh, history. She's the only 30th girls' basketball player to score 1,000 points at college. So thank you, everybody. And by all means, if anybody has any questions, please let me know. Have a great night.
Thanks, Michael.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else, uh, Mr. Simons?
No, I, I, I will reserve any other comments about reopening and the school operation for, uh, maybe the second round.
Okay, second round. Okay, so that, uh, took quite a lot of time, was an important topic to our community, our, our sports folks. And, you know, one thing I, I had to also say is that when they open up sports, high-risk sports like this to potentially playing, our folks who do the arts and music, you know, we feel for you too, because I think that is also something that has to be addressed with the guidance to allow not just student athletes, but also our artists or musicians and clubs to be able to do some of these things too. Because, um, those, those things that they do are just as important as our athletics. And, and this district has always shown that we're a huge supporter of the arts here at the district and music programs and other clubs and, um, as well as athletics. So it's a, it's for everybody.
Thank you for saying that, Mike. I know some districts have expressed this concern about consistency of the criteria that's being applied to sports and music. I, I will say that our music department has done a wonderful job trying to find a way to have band, orchestra and chorus this year. And if you come to the high school, which we are limiting visitors, but I, they let me in, uh, in the morning. And you go down to the cafeteria, our band kids are practicing 12 feet apart with their music stands and their instruments. Then you walk down to the auditorium and our choral groups are spread out in the auditorium and they're singing with their masks on. And then you walk around the corner and you go down to the, uh, some of the music rooms. And our strings kids are playing and it's really nice. So we, they found a way and over the holidays, they presented the community with a virtual performance. And so they're doing a great job.
That's great. Yeah, it's always encouraging. So now move to, uh, a couple other topics is the discussion items. So we're moved to the 21, 22 budget discussion.
So we're, we're moving, actually, we're not moving into, we are in budget season. And at this point, the governor has released to the residents of the state of New York, his executive governor, uh, governor's proposal for the budget for next year, which includes the portions of the budget related to state school aid. And, um, that information, uh, was provided to us from our elected legislators. And we began to do a review of it to determine what the state is proposing at this point in the budget process for our revenues, which is relying very heavily on an assumption that a large amount of federal aid will flow into the state, which will be distributed, uh, through a formula to the schools. Uh, Linda Wager, who is our director of business and finance, has, uh, worked to review the data on, uh, the projected state aid for our schools. Uh, she has also worked with Questar, which has a statewide department called State Aid Planning that helps us to understand our state aid scenario. So I'm going to turn it over to Linda to talk about the state aid analysis and then we'll kind of jump back and forth.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simons. Uh, so I wanted to provide the board tonight some general and very preliminary information on a few different topics. One is the, uh, the governor's executive budget and then how that pertains to our district as well as. budget, and then how that pertains to our district, as well as I wanted to just give some general information on where we are with health insurance rates, BOSI's rates, a review of the budget request items, and just an update on the enrollment projection. So, Mr. Goodwin, if you could pull up the file under Budget Discussion, that's called New York State Budget for School Aid Comparison.
Senator.
Pardon me. Nope, that was fine.
He's got to share the screen.
Okay.
There we go.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is an overview of the executive budget as it pertains to school aid and education. And there's a couple of items that I just want to point out to you. The governor prepared this budget with an assumption of a $6 billion in federal aid. That is not a guarantee at this point, but he felt it was a strong assumption. He is, however, asking the federal government for $15 billion for New York State. But this budget was prepared with $6 billion in mind. Another item that he, in that first section there that you're seeing on top, where it says total state-funded school aid, that includes that $6 billion that I was referring to. Another item in here is foundation aid. That is the largest part of our general aid that we receive. And that is staying the same as it is in the 2021 school year, which is also the same as it was in the 1920 school year. So that is a three-year flat rate. Another item that the governor proposed was taking a series of aid categories and summarizing them into a category called services aid. And if you look, the categories include BOSI's aid, transportation aid, instructional material aids. Those are the main categories in our district that will be consolidated into the services aid category. If we could stay on that first sheet, Peter, that'd be great. And I'll tell you when to move up. And so if you look at that, in the 2021 proposal, it's $3.7 billion. But next year, he is projecting $3.3 billion. So he's consolidating those aids, and it is being decreased. And it's interesting how it falls with our district, which we'll discuss in a minute. Another item that he put into his budget this year, which has not been included in prior years, is the STAR reimbursement. So there are two types of STAR. One is a credit, and that is where a homeowner pays the taxes and then receives a check back from the government. And the other, which applies to us, is an exemption on a homeowner's taxes. So therefore, the homeowner pays less in taxes, and then the state makes the district whole with the STAR aid. And that has never been included as state aid. We always include that as part of our taxes. So that is something to consider. And he is also reflecting a negative funding adjustment against that. And then, very importantly, at the bottom, there is a COVID-19 Supplemental Stimulus Act. And that is $3.8 billion that he has included in the budget. That is a second source of federal revenue. And that is the money that was approved by the president in December. So of that allocation, that total allocation federal-wide, New York State is receiving a certain amount, about $4 billion, and $3.8 billion of that is plugged into the state aid projections. That's a concern not only for next year, because that is not supplemental revenue to us, but it's a concern for the years after that. Because if the state doesn't have that federal money in the '22-'23 school year, coming from the federal government, it's got to come from somewhere. So it will come either in the form, it will come most likely in the form of reductions in state aid. So that's something for us to keep in mind, that this pandemic has not only affected this year, next year, but the following year. If we could move on to the next sheet there, Peter, Mr. Goodwin. What I did is I took, the governor's budget is then spread out over the districts, and we received state aid runs. And I took our state aid run, and I compared it, a side-by-side comparison for this current year versus projected for next year. When we receive the runs, it's in a vertical format, but I thought this would be easier to take a look at. So as I said, the foundation aid is staying static at $17.1 million. The services aid, in our case, is projected to increase. And I'm going to go over what makes up that aid in a little bit, and why I'm concerned about it. If you go down a little bit farther, you can see our STAR payment. Our STAR payment this year was almost $4.2 million. It's projected to be $4 million next year. So that alone is a decrease in the STAR program that I spoke about. He also included in that area the local district funding adjustment of $3.9 million. So that $3.9 million adjustment is East Green Bush District's portion of that $3.8 billion that I referred to on the previous page. So he's actually reducing that from the STAR payment. So there's some question right now, and the state aid planners are actually in contact with our legislators, trying to figure out exactly how that adjustment will be taken. Will we receive that in less STAR aid, which will affect our ability to tax? Or will it be a deduct from our regular state aid? So the next sheet there, Peter. I looked at our, I referred to the services aid. So in our current year, the combination of those aids is $5.9 million. It's projected next year at $7.1 million. So I was concerned about that, because those projections seemed high to me. And I looked at our BOSI's aid, is projected to increase $300,000. Our transportation aid, $900,000. And these numbers seem artificially high to me. So those numbers, I talked with the state aid planners, those numbers are projections. And the truth is, those payments will be made based on our expenditures for this year. Our aid ratios went up slightly. Transportation aid went from 65.2, it's projected at 66% next year. But that does not account for that large increase in transportation aid. So I just caution everyone that these are very preliminary and most likely will be changing. That is what I had, that was just a general overview of what we know so far about the state aid. Now I can go on to the other topics, or we can stop there, and I can answer some questions.
Why don't we do that, Linda? Why don't we see if there's any questions about state aid?
Okay.
Before we go any further.
Since we're screen sharing, I can't see anybody. So if you want to talk, you can go ahead and, there we go. Ask a question. I don't see any questions. Okay.
Okay.
Anybody here?
All right.
Complicated subject.
Okay.
And again, I just want to say, this is the executive proposal?
Yes.
This is not the final proposal. I mean,
Right.
You know, three men in a room kind of thing has to happen too, right?
Right.
That was the old school way.
So the next thing I wanted to talk about was health insurance rates. That's a large part of our budget, is our health insurance expense. Right now, we are in conversations with AMSHR, our insurance agent. There are slight increases in the premium rates for our Blue Shield plans. I don't know the increase in rates for the CDPHP plans yet. But what we are looking at is trying to use some of the reserve money that we have with KASIC, our health insurance consortium. We have reserves on file with them. And we will be talking with them about using some of those reserves so that we can keep our health insurance rates in check, basically. So there'll be more information to come on that. And we expect that I'll be able to have final rates probably towards the end of February.
Yep.
The next item is BOSI's rates. I'm just going to give a quick overview on that, because I see we have a further presentation on that. The BOSI's rates look very good this year. There are three components to the rates, the administration, the rent and capital, and then the services. The administration and the rent and capital sections have a 0% increase this year. The services rates, that consists of all of the programs that we sign up for, many of the instructional programs that we sign up for with BOSI's. And 94% of those programs have a less than or equal to 2% increase. So those rate increases are very acceptable. And we'll be going into some further information on that. The next item I wanted to talk about was the budget request items. And, Mr. Goodwin, there is a spreadsheet on that, if you could pull that up. So over the last month, a month and a half, I met with all of the building administrators, department heads, supervisors, directors. And we talked about items that are important to them in this next budget. And we also spoke about the fact that we are in a pandemic, and we are facing a financial crisis. So we have decided that in this next budget, our main priority will be focused on academic intervention services. So as we went through this, I tried to categorize all of these requests into a priority A, B, or C. So basically, all of the AIS requests, I'm putting those in a column in priority A, which is in the items in blue. And the reason I did that, that's not saying that these items are going in, it's just saying that these items are of the top priority of the requests we've received. And all of these requests are subject to budget, our state aid, how our revenue is coming out, and our enrollment review. So a couple of the items I wanted to point out, you know, most of the elementary buildings are looking for an additional .5 AIS teacher. And I calculated those salaries based on, I used step three of the salary schedule for '21-'22. And I did that because we don't always bring all of our teachers in at step one. And sometimes they're a little bit higher than step three. They could be step five. So I used step three. I used the TRS expense percentage of 10%, FICA at 7.65%. On the non-instructional salaries, I used an ERS percentage of 16.2%, which I do have that supporting documentation from ERS and TRS. And as far as the health insurance, I projected using family health insurance plans with a district share of 82%. So that would be an employee contribution of 18%. So each of the elementaries have really requested an additional .5 AIS. Janay has requested a little bit more than that, but that was in light of, we're looking at enrollment. And it appears that we have a large kindergarten projection for enrollment. It seems out of line with the other years. So based on that, based on increased enrollment, and also based on the fact that we've had some families leave the district when we reopened, and they may be coming back next year. So that's why we're talking about an extra AIS teachers, and possibly the need for extra grade-level teachers as well. In the middle school, their priority was the same thing, AIS. They are looking for additional help with AIS, as well as additional help with homework clubs after school, where the teachers are staying now for an hour twice a week, helping students. We currently have four teachers doing that, and they're requesting to increase that to six teachers. At the high school, we felt there may be a priority for increased Apex licenses through our BOSI's. And we currently have 50. And we are assuming that we could probably have a need for another 40. Under the curriculum instruction, we have the Savis, I think that's how you say it, Savis and Vision program. This is a K-8 program that we renew the subscription for every three years. So this is a three-year subscription. It is quite expensive, but what we're thinking is that we may need to take some of the allocation that we've made to the buildings for textbooks and reclassify that to this district-wide code, so that we can cover that expense. I'm going to come back to technology. In the Pupil Personnel Services Department, they are requesting, a few years ago, when the responsibilities for registrar was moved over to that office, it short-staffed the office by approximately a .5 typist. So we're looking to either restaff that office with a .5, reassign responsibilities from another typist position to that office, or possibly there is a Power School online, which is the most expensive option, and something that we may need to consider in a future year. But what this would allow the registrar to do is it would allow families to register online. And all of the documentation would be going back and forth through a secure online portal. In athletics, the main priority is a coach for the girls' golf team. That sport has been growing over the last few years, and there is some difficulty in scheduling with the boys' golf team and the girls' golf team together. And then there was also a request for some additional assistant coaching positions by season. In operations and maintenance, next year, in the '21-'22 school year, we are required to have a building condition survey completed, and that's estimated to be $50,000. The infrared radiant heating system is, there are three heating systems in the bus bay garage at the transportation center. All three of them have failed. Two of them have been repaired this year, and the $44,000 is to repair the third one next year. There is also, as part of our replacement, vehicle replacement plan, the need to replace a Ford F-150 pickup. We'd be replacing a 2009 F-250 pickup. And then there are a couple of other items that we, a salt shed for storing salt, which we will discuss with the town of East Green Bush, sharing that service, as well as a platform, this platform Superstraddle. What that is, is that is when they have to change the light bulbs in the auditorium at the high school in Janay. At the high school, they actually have to unbolt all of those seats, so that they can get a piece of equipment in there to get up and change those light bulbs. And so this would make it easier. But we are looking into the possibility of renting that from, possibly next door at the True Value. The Human Resources Department, we are looking into, there is a need for additional clerical assistance during their peak times. And we are also looking into exploring a service for investigations that need to be done. And that's very time-consuming for that department. So we're just looking into that. In the Transportation Department, I listed there the replacement of eight buses, which, that's part of our replacement plan. I did not put those in a priority category, because that's I did not put those in a priority category because that's $736,000 is covered by the bus reserve that we have. And that bus reserve plan, we add in the state aid from the buses, bus purchases every year, and we try to add to that. So at the end of June 30th, 2020, we had over $900,000 in there. So those buses will be covered. The transportation department is requesting to update their Transfinder program to a cloud-based program so that in the event of power outages, they would still have access to that and that is $15,000. Those are the main requests that we had and as I said, we're focusing our efforts on AIS and we definitely do need to renew the Envision license for the next three years.
Lynda did a nice job of summarizing everything and detailing everything, a really great organization so that the board can see and the public can see what the requests are. One of the things I will reemphasize that Mrs. Wager said was that this is just a starting point and a preliminary review of what our building administrators, directors, and supervisors have identified as requests. There are aspects of the budget that go up automatically, such as the health insurance salaries and benefits, including retirement projections that relate to TRS and ERS. So some of these requests are dependent upon where we go with revenues and where we go with the tax cap, which is likely to be very low this year.
That's correct. I'm sorry, but I did not go back to the technology department and I do want to go back to that for a minute because we are having a needs assessment and there's a lot of numbers there. So I did want to cover a couple of things. We are having an assessment of our technology needs being done, which is just getting started by an outside firm. So I just wanted to highlight that. But in, some items that we do need to think about are the replacement of the VMware systems. This year, we replaced about $100,000 worth towards that system and there's another $35,000 that's needed for next year. We have also some contracts that have come as a result of the capital projects that we did. We have maintenance contracts on the telephone, the PA system, and those are set, they're approximately $60,000. We are also requesting, there is a request for some additional professional development within the technology department. And then the line item there that I really wanted to talk to you about is the $840,000. And what that is, is that's for the replacement, we're in the third year of our lighthouse program, our one-to-one Chromebook program. So that $840,000 represents 3,000 Chromebooks and licenses. The reason I haven't put it into a category is because we have Smart Schools money left to take care of this purchase. We have to submit the plan, which in February you'll be hearing about, and then there is a public comment period before we actually submit the application, which will be in March. But I don't know the timeframe for the approval of that application, so I don't want to put $840,000 into the budget because I won't be able to estimate the revenue to go along with that until we know that there is an approved application. Are there any questions on that? Okay. And then the last category I just wanted to just brief you on is the enrollment projection. I just today received the draft report from CDRPC. I will be reviewing it this week and we expect the final report to be issued next week. So I'll have that for the board the first week in February. I do want to reiterate that they are still projecting a high kindergarten enrollment this year. Our kindergarten enrollment dates are set for February and March, so we'll know how that comes out and we'll be able to give you updates on the progression of that.
Thanks, Lynda. Any questions, board members? No? Again, I want to read what Jeff said, there's a ton of work going on here, Lynda breaking it out for the community and for the board to see really specifically kind of what the needs are, what the, at the executive level, what kind of things that they're doing to support school districts or not. And then kind of what our role is going to be to take this information with, once the team gets it, to start working on our budget and what we need to do as a community to support our students and families, but also recognize that our taxpayers have been stretched during this pandemic too. So it's going to be a very delicate balancing act for us to navigate. Anything else? No? Good. Thank you, Lynda.
That's all I had.
All right. Moving on to the next discussion item, there was a Questar budget review for 21, 22. Lynda mentioned the rates briefly and she was happy with the rates.
Lynda just told all but one thing that I was going to say about it, so that was good. We'll save some time and I appreciate you summarizing that. The only thing I would point out and I would encourage the board and members of the community to really read the presentation, the Questar BOSI's is mindful of the component districts' financial circumstances as we just described and has really done a good job of being as efficient as they can be with a zero increase, as was mentioned, in the administrative budget, an average of 2% in some of the programs, most of the programs. It's a very tight budget for the Questar in terms of not filling staff and making some of the tough decisions that we're going to have to make. So I'm appreciative of that. But in the document, if you look through it, about 43 pages in, there's information that helps to understand what our responsibilities are within the component districts, which are 23 component districts in Questar. Our enrollment in career and technical education programs offered by Questar and in Tech Valley High School, which is a specialized STEM program operated at the CNSCE campus at U Albany, has increased over the last few years and that is due to some changes in practice that have enabled more kids who may be able to pursue career and technical education, maybe have a career field interest that sparks them to enroll on a course at Questar and changes in our registration process that offers the full complement of courses to students that A, may want to take them and B, can fit them into their schedule. So the numbers are, in the budget are reflective of more participation in Questar programs as well as, as our enrollment grows, which it is growing, our portion of the share of the overall expenses associated based on a formula called ARWADA, which is rated weighted average daily attendance, we contribute more, being a larger district in the BOSI's and having growing enrollment. And it's a formula that is averaged over a few years. So our kids are doing well in the BOSI's programs and the Questar is doing a good job of managing their costs.
Any questions? I think the ARWADA chart that starts in '09, '10 and goes through 1920, which is on page 39. If you get a chance to look at that, you can see how the district, I think it's a testament to our community and our district that we've seen a trend where students and families are enrolling in our program in our district, whereas there's been significant dips throughout the region. And I think it just speaks to the quality of education in the community about people being attracted to live and work in our community and send their children to our schools. So it's a positive trend. It's good to see that, you know, and with more families probably coming in in the future with some of the development of Regeneron and other industries, we'll probably see that increase and we still want to offer the complement of services and programs to our community to best educate and prepare our students for college and career. So good information. Thank you, Mike. Any other comments before moving on to discussion items? No? Okay, we'll move to committee reports and Marissa, you're up first. Appendix D.
Thank you. So our Appendix D committee met on Thursday, January 21st and we started off the committee meeting by scheduling some future meeting dates through March of 2021. As of now, we are scheduled three meetings in February and an additional three in March. We have, so far, we have a draft evaluation tool ready and we also have a draft application tool. And what we've been struggling on as a committee is the cost matrix. So what we've done during this most recent meeting was kind of look at it through a new lens and Joanne had taken a close look at our matrix that we had been working on over the holiday break and recommended that perhaps we look at an hourly rate for the new cost structure. We've been very focused on trying to make Appendix C, which is our coaches, model Appendix D, and it's really, it's been trying to put a square peg in a round hole and it's just not working. So when Joanne had suggested that, our committee felt it was a good idea to look at all of our options, including one could be an hourly rate, something similar perhaps to an intramural rate. And we've also decided, while looking at that hourly rate, to see if we could potentially develop different tiers and look at commonalities between some of the Appendix D clubs and we could have potentially three tiers and each of those three tiers could be at a different rate depending on the club functions and activities. We discussed several areas of exploration such as setting parameters, so what would be the maximum cap on the highest number of earnings for that hourly rate? How would we look at preparation time? How would that be compensated? And then how many times per year? There is language in the contract that states that our Appendix D advisors are paid two times a year. So really looking at, how would that hourly rate work at two times a year? Would we have to keep the pay slips and disperse? Is there room for potential new language in the contract? So that's where we've, we left it. It was really a good brainstorming session. So we will continue to update you on where these items go moving forward and we will be hopefully putting together a cost matrix with some hourly figures and seeing where that goes.
Thank you, Marissa. Anything you want to add, Joanne, as a participant?
I think that Marissa summed it up pretty well. Once you get into it, to look at it, it's a lot more complex than meets the eye to say just to set up a new matrix. There are so many different variables and even just saying, you know, what about an hourly weight rate? There are so many different variables that need to be adjusted and shifted. Maybe we could do something like that, maybe we should stick with something else, but there's just so many ambiguities that we need to really take the time and sit and go through it, plug numbers in, plug clubs in, really play with it to see what's going to work best once we actually set it into motion.
Thank you, Joanne. Appreciate all your, the team's work on the Appendix D. Any questions for Joanne or Marissa? Thank you. We'll move to Lynda. Any committee reports?
I don't have anything.
You had plenty so far. Thank you. Jim McHugh?
No committee reports at this time.
Thank you. I know you're on the agenda a little later too. Mr. Simons?
Yes, real quickly, the advocacy committee, which was established last year to work with our community to address issues for public schools, including the state aid discussion that we've been talking about tonight. We met on January 22nd via Zoom and we are discussing the idea of having another thought exchange forum with our community on or about February 11th, where in addition to giving the community an update regarding our school operations and COVID, talking about some of the financial issues that, to make our community more aware and to hopefully follow that up with some type of a virtual forum where we talk with our legislators as we did in a live forum last year about some of our challenges. And that would include our state legislators and our federal representatives. I'm going to ask Mrs. Curtin, a member of our board, to talk a little bit about what the School Boards Association event is coming up. We've timed this after Mrs. Curtin attends some of the activities going on sponsored by the New York State School Boards Association. Mrs. Curtin?
Okay, on next Wednesday, February 3rd, there is going to be the, I don't even remember the name of it now, but basically it's the advocacy component of the New York State School Boards Association and they're going to be doing a whole presentation on the executive budget. I know I'm planning on attending, I believe Ms. Massey is also. And once we kind of listen to that, kind of get where the School Boards Association is going with what they feel the priorities are for advocacy, I think that will help give us some ideas of where the rest of the state's going. That doesn't mean we have to be in the same spot, but it at least gives us some ideas of where we can get some additional help from other people who are in a very similar situation as us. And I think, you know, the hardest thing this year is everybody needs money and we're going to be told there is none. So it's going to be an interesting year for advocacy all the way around, I think.
Thank you, Mrs. Curtin. The other committee I want to report on, which is a very important committee, is our Committee on Global Education. This committee was formed last year to address concerns regarding diversity, to make sure that as a district, we continue to offer an inclusive and supportive and accepting environment that respects all students, all staff members, and all community members. We have been meeting and discussing what we could do as a district to continue to address issues around race, ethnicity, discrimination, acceptance, and inclusion. The committee is broken into four subgroups and each of those subgroups is chaired by a respective administrator and/or teacher. So we have family and community engagement, we have policies and procedures, we have teaching and learning, and we have professional development. And we've come up with some priority activities for this year that we want to continue to highlight to our community. The Professional Development Committee will be sponsoring a book study for teachers and staff with a book that is all about racial justice, including transforming communities through mindfulness. There are four, five sessions set up for the book study in March, April, and May. That book study is open to any of the committee members or anybody else who wants to join us and we're in the process of registering people and ordering the book. Additionally, we want to develop an ambassador program in each school that would reach out to new parents, students, and staff who are coming from outside the community, including those families that are coming maybe from outside the state or outside of our country, to formally welcome them and assist them at adjusting to a new school district and a new community and help them navigate what resources are available within the community. We have a curriculum instruction committee that is looking at formal, research-based instruments that can be used to look at our curricular resources, to ensure that we are mindful of any ethnic or racial bias within our instructional materials. And Mr. McHugh's Professional Development Committee is looking at ways that we can incorporate some training and professional development for all staff next year, including the inclusion of some of the topics around diversity into our curriculum through summer curriculum program. through summer curriculum projects. Recently, we brought to the attention of our staff, and we sent this out. There are workshops being sponsored by the Capital District Regional Partnership, including on culturally responsive practices. There is a workshop on February 25th on family engagement, community, and culture. On March 11th, fundamentals of equity, exploring equity and cultural responsiveness. And in April, 29th of April, what does it mean to be a culturally responsive educator? Those are free professional development opportunities that we have brought to the attention of our staffs. So, we're doing a lot of work in this area. We know that it is an important thing that we need to continue to emphasize, and our committee is very excited about the work we're doing.
Excellent. All great activities. I appreciate the committee's work on that. Any questions for Mr. Simons on the committee work for low education? Excellent. I wanted to go back about the advocacy. I know that the interim commissioner and the chancellor also did a letter, a public letter that went out. I think many of you maybe got it through your email from SED, really supporting the fact that a lot of the governor's budget talked about these being one shots and, and making sure that the impact on these things long-term could be devastating for, for school districts. So, I thought it was very well, I mean, it's the first time I think I've seen SED in a long time come out very strongly about advocating for schools in that way. So, it was good to see that in terms of the, the responsiveness. Thank you, Mike. That concludes my report. Thanks, Mr. Simons. Moving on to the next topic is the approval of draft minutes for January 13th. All members were present, either virtually or in person. Any changes, revisions to those minutes that need to be made? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes. Kathleen and Jennifer, second? All those in favor? Approved. Moving to regular business, approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions? Need a motion for, to approve that? Joanne, second? Michelle, all those in favor? Approved. Moving to our goals, objectives. We've had conversations about the goals and objectives in recent meetings. This is an opportunity for us to formalize those. Any final comments regarding the goals and objectives for 2020, 2021? I had asked Mr. Simons to make sure that, also that we think about our planning processes in terms of continuing to look at reopening at the elementary school, in terms of more days in person, all the activities that we put in place before the surge hit after the holidays, and making sure that, that's also, you know, at the forefront of our, our planning and thinking as we think about the goals for, for this remainder of the year.
We have started to discuss that, reestablishing that process of looking at some of the options that we were considering prior to the holiday increase in COVID cases. And Mr. McHugh and I are talking about how to meet with our principals and get that process started.
Excellent. I know there's been a lot going on. I think that's important for our community, knowing that as we, as we move past the surge of cases, that there'll be more efforts to help the district move into more elementary in-person instruction. So, with that, I need, if there's any questions or comments on the goals and objectives? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve those. Mark, second? John, all those in favor? Approved. Thank you, everyone. Reports and presentations of the superintendent of schools. This is the graduation rate by subgroup, I believe. You're going to introduce Mr. McHugh.
I get to pass this off to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, Mr. McHugh.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jim.
Peter can pull the slides up. So, you can go to that first slide, Peter. Thank you. So, New York State Education Department collects the graduation data for approximately 200 students, 20,000 students per year. They look at over 700 public school districts and over 200 charter schools each year. So, whenever you see the New York State data, that is what they are referring to. The data is reported by cohort group, and how they describe the cohort group, it is, it is the year that the students, the graduating class entered grade nine for the first time. So, last year's graduating class of 2020 was the cohort group of 2016. What's really important for us is that the graduation rates are now calculated for, and we're responsible for, not just the four-year graduation rate in June, but also that four-year graduation rate in August, the five-year graduation rate, and now the six-year graduation rate. I'll talk about that a little bit. Each year, we get our ESSA report on accountability, and it was not, it was not an ESSA indicator that they held us accountable for this year, but they did give us the data on our six-year graduation rate. So, meaning a student that doesn't walk across that stage in June, we still have that responsibility to try to get them to graduate for two years after their classmates have graduated. So, we knew that our six-year graduation rate for students that fall under the category of economically disadvantaged, we didn't show growth in that area. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more towards the end. 2020, we know it wasn't a typical school year. On March 16th, the executive order directed us to close no later than March 18th. There are subsequent executive orders that required schools to remain closed for the remainder of the school year. You know, we, we lose sight of the fact that where we are today, when we go back to last March, we've got two days' worth of notice for our schools and for all of our teachers, the shift instruction from in-person to completely remote. April 2020, the Education Department canceled the June and August Regents exams. On May 4th, the Board of Regents decrees regulatory changes for exemptions on the August 2020 Regents exams. And really what that meant was certain students were exempted, were exempt from the Regents exam requirements, passing the four required, plus the fifth of global. Parents had the option to decline the Regents exam's exemption, so their child would remain in school if they so chose to do so. Next slide, Peter. But you could, you know, when we look at this cohort data, you could assume that the Regents exam exemptions were a factor in the increase in the graduation rate. However, we cannot say to what extent. So, New York State overall increased from 83.4% to 84.8%. Columbia High School was at 97%. It should be noted that we were also 97% in 2019. So, digging a little deeper, these exemptions, they impacted 16 of our students. 11 of those students happened to be students with a disability, and four of those students were sitting for the required Regents for the first time. We took a deeper look into those 16 students. They were well-prepared to take their exams. We were very confident that they would have done well on those exams if those were given. But the graduation rate increase, where you're seeing the largest increase in graduation rate are the high-needs, inner-city, large-city schools. So, there were more students in some of those subgroups that really needed that exemption from the Regents in order to graduate. So, in, in high-needs area, you saw a larger increase in the graduation rate. In low-needs areas, such as East Greenbush, you saw little to no change in that graduation rate. So, why is this important? We're continually reviewing our data to assess and respond to the possible impact of the NICE Executive Order. So, it wasn't just a one-year thing. It wasn't just an exemption from Regents from last year. It has an impact on our current students, our seniors this year, our juniors this year, our sophomores this year. There could have been a prerequisite course, right? That had a Regents attached to it, that they're now in a higher-level course. So, we are monitoring that impact. We look at our course failures quarterly. We're looking at students that are failing one subject, students that are failing more subjects, and we are trying to make sure that we have supports in place to support those students that might need that little extra support. So, next slide, Pete. So, we look at our four-year graduation date rate by subgroup. This is all students, it's 96%. What that includes, it includes our students that may go and attend other programs in other schools. The next slide, Peter. Our students in Columbia High School, that was our 97% graduation rate. And you can see where we've been over the years from 2014 through 2020. Next slide, Pete. We break it down by female students. Next slide. Male students. Next slide. And then by ethnicity. Next slide, Peter. Next one. Next one. And general education students, and then students with disabilities. So, we look at these cohorts. The next slide, Pete. Economically disadvantaged students. And you can go to the next slide, Pete. And then, really, what are our next steps? We identify who our non-completers are. So, we've gone back four years to really see who these students are that aren't graduating, that are dropping out. We try to build a student profile. And that's been quite interesting to do. So, in our 2013 cohort, six students did not graduate. 2014, it was eight students. The 2015 cohort, four. And then last year's graduating class, it was five students. 10 males, 13 females. 10 of those 23 students were students with disabilities. We have seen an increase in emotional wellness issues. So, some of the students that did drop out, somewhere along that line, typically between seventh and 10th grade, there were some emotional wellness issues that really prevented that student from being successful. 14 of our students that did not graduate over the last four years, 61% of them fell into the category of economically disadvantaged. So, we know that's a factor. That's a national statistic as well. Interestingly enough, we don't realize here in East Greenbush the depth of challenges that some of our students face. We had three homeless students that didn't graduate over the last four years. Four of the 23 students were in very strong academic standing. So, if you look just at their grades, they were straight A students, 90s, maybe an occasional 80 or a B. But there were, there were four students that really had strong academic standing. But there were some other reason why they were not able to graduate. 11 of the students, almost half of those students, were students that transferred in and out of the district. So, somewhere along the line, they transferred out of the district, they might have returned, or vice versa. They transferred into the district from another school district. Four students, and this is interesting to note, refused district-recommended placement. So, for instance, two of our students were placed in CTAP. The placement was appropriate because the grades were strong and the students were quite successful. And then the students either chose to homeschool or chose to try to return to the high school setting. Students might be placed in Parsons, a skills program, or the Rensselaer Ed Center. But what we did note is that there were challenges and contributing factors on why these students didn't graduate. And it included, it wasn't just, it just wasn't a single challenge. It was sometimes a combination of multiple challenges. But those things included homelessness, placement and addiction and recovery programs, pregnancy, medical issues, and of course, chronic absenteeism. So, what are we doing? You know, we, without our strong special education and related services program, I, I would almost guarantee that our non-completers, our dropout numbers would increase drastically. But it should be noted that our special education and related services is a program under review this year. Our alternative education program is under, is scheduled to be under review next year. So, those are things we're looking at. And, you know, there is that increased accountability. So, we're looking for those commonalities. We're looking for trends, and we're looking for missed opportunities. Is there something that we're missing that we could be doing? I know COVID-19's been a tremendous challenge, but there are some students that have flourished in, in our remote learning. So, there may be some things that may be an appropriate alternative for some students moving forward. So, that's, that's that data. Are there any questions or comments? I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jim. So, we'll stop sharing, and
the board has asked us never to rest on our laurels, and a 97% graduation rate is a significant accomplishment. But we are now focusing on the dropout rate as Mr. McHugh, identifying those common indicators of those kids, and bringing that information back to those program reviews and special ed and alt to see what we can do to fill those gaps for those kids that meet those, those challenges. So, I appreciate the work that Mr. McHugh is doing, not only on the presentation, but really going and, and taking a deep dive into the data, kid by kid. Jim looked at the, the specific children. Over the last three years, three cohorts had dropped out. Talked with principals and counselors and got a profile of those kids to learn what we could do, or maybe what we missed to intervene in the future. So, I really appreciate that work, Jim.
Yep, definitely. And the whole team in terms of supporting our families and students to get them over the finish line, so to speak, to get, so they can be, have an opportunity once they leave Columbia High School. So, thank you for all your work. Moving from graduation rates, subgroup, table motions. I don't have anything at this time. Old business, board members, any old business that we didn't mention? No? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items A through H. Any questions or comments for the team? No? All right. Anything you want to highlight, Mr. Simons?
No, I think everything's pretty straightforward.
Okay. I did see we had an appointment for the business office, which is good, right? Payroll specialist, very good. Again, thanks for all the work. It's a, it's a difficult time to hire during this period, right, Marissa? And I appreciate all your work on the personnel side.
Mike, can I quickly congratulate Wendy Hadley, Ben Kelvin, and Maureen Kersh on their upcoming retirements? When you look at the number of years, there's over 65 years of service to the children of East Greenbush, and it's a remarkable amount of time and a remarkable amount of work.
Yep. Great, thanks for mentioning that. Hopefully, towards the end of this school year, maybe we can do some recognition activities about some of our retirees and tenured folks like we usually do. Fingers crossed. But thanks for mentioning that, and those are some familiar names across the district. So, good luck in your retirement. Any other comments or questions? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Kathleen? Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. New business, board members, any new business to bring to the attention of the admin? No? We do have an item for new business proposal for a technology department position. You want to speak to that, Mr. Simons?
Yes, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Goodman, our Director of Technology. The board is aware that prior to COVID, we, we wanted to look at the capacity of our technology department. We have a very small technology department, and the relative number of people in the department and the position descriptions have been the same for many, many years. And at that, during the same time period, particularly over the last four years, we've, we've, through the Capital Project, installed a new phone system that requires the technology department's support, new security cameras and software that requires the technology department's support, the one-to-one program for Chromebooks, and the expansion of devices to the teachers and the students funded through Smart Schools. And the, the department under Peter's direction does an excellent job, but it is stretched, and that is probably the biggest understatement that I've ever made. So, we are looking at a full review from the Madison O'Naita Regional Information Center of the capacity of the department, and they will bring back a report by the end of the year. We've had some meetings this year to get that, that study back on track, including last week between Mr. Goodman, myself, and Mr. McHugh. In the interim, we have a position that has been vacated, vacated through a resignation of a network technician. And Mr. Goodman is reviewing the needs of his department, feels that a different type of position with a different description, different background, and different compensation level would support the department capacity a little better. So, Mr. Goodman, if you're ready and able not to operate the computer at the same time, can you give us a little bit of a overview of what we are proposing to do? We're looking to move forward on this if the board supports the concept. We recognize that this is not a good time to add costs, but we also have really a capacity issue. We also think that this position may cut down on some of the overtime. Wayne? Excuse me, you, Peter?
Yes, hi, thank you. One of the things that I've noticed, I'm here for every board meeting, and I've heard it again and again, you know, whenever we have an opening. in our staff, that we should reevaluate the position. And so I've done a little bit of that for this particular position. The position primarily serves here at Columbia High School. When you look at the current situation with the Chromebook one-to-one program, we've taken on the added support of families and their Wi-Fi experiences at home. An increased demand, unprecedented level really, of Chromebook usage now. And so the demands are far different than they were just, you know, one or two years ago. Also try to consider, you know, timeline. So realistically, you know, if our work with the MoRIC yielded, you know, a finding that we needed to add positions, realistically, the earliest we could do that would be July of 2022. So, you know, looking at the needs, the way things have increased, you know, I support the addition of a higher-level technician for this particular location and also to build capacity within the department. We're trying to be the best that we can be. And we have several key positions held by people who've been here quite a long time and have done a great job. And we need to make sure that they have backup, they have support. So we can achieve both of those things with this particular move. And it's my recommendation to the board that we post for the Educational Technology Specialist position, which has a different level of technical skill and experience associated with it, rather than post the Network Technician position, which is currently vacant.
Any questions? Now Peter's behind the screen, so he can, the big screen, while I'm looking at you guys.
Sorry.
So is there, no, that's okay. Any questions for Peter? I think that, I assume, Marissa, you helped with the analysis of the position. And what about the recruiting for the position?
So next steps, if the board supports this, I would go to the Rensselaer County Civil Service to see if there's an eligible list for this particular position. If there is, we would have to hire off of that list. If not, we would move forward with posting the position as a provisional hire.
What are, just an example, what are some of the qualifications, Peter, that, the minimum qualms that would be in this position versus the Network Technician that make a higher skill level?
So the educational technologist has a higher level of experience, and the minimum qualifications are higher as well.
Okay.
They're able to handle a wider variety of problems and understand how they relate to the entire network that's in play. Also, would be a person who would have the ability to perform as a backup for key positions that we have only one person in.
Okay. Is that Wayne's title?
The gentleman sitting right next to me, yes.
I thought so, I just wanted to... I think I support, I mean, I think as those distinctions, I mean, I think that, given the need for depth, it is a FTE neutral. It is pay higher, but if we're also, if it could be something that supports less overtime and Wayne's time for backup, seems like a logical way to go. So any comments, folks?
Also an SRP position. So the outgoing position was represented by SRP. The new position would be represented by SRP. So it's not, they're not losing any bargaining unit members.
Okay. Very good.
Mike, do you know what the increase is from the current vacant position to what the new position would be salary-wise?
Any estimates, Marissa, on a typical year with this rate?
I would have to get you that information.
Okay. So I'm looking at the difference, I mean, I'm just looking at step one mark on the document. Bullet number two and bullet number three in the memo, Peter, pervert. Looks like it's about $12 on step one, and it's consistent throughout the schedule.
Yeah, there's an hourly rate differential.
Yeah.
Of, depending on what step the person is. The current outgoing position is 2475 on step one. Step 11 is $35.05. And the new position at comparable steps would be 3648 and 4750, respectively. So the hourly rate is higher. I don't know, Peter, not to put you on the spot, do you know what the estimated total salary per year would be? Let's assume it's a step one.
I think I could figure that out for you. I don't have it in front of me.
Why don't we, rather than, rather than guests, we'll provide that information as follow-up to the board.
Yep.
I can work on that tomorrow.
Just use a typical 20, 80 hours. It's 75.
I just think it is a long overdue, anyways.
Okay. May I support, has anyone not support moving in that direction? Because it's going to take time to, there's a list posting, Michelle?
So I support it as long as it's, you know, fiscally responsible, that we're not an excessive amount of difference. I think Peter and his staff have picked up a tremendous amount of work with all the remote, and I definitely would support it as long as we can financially handle it.
Thank you. We'll put together the total estimated salary and benefits of the new position, and we'll set that out tomorrow.
Okay, very good. I want a couple of things, in new business, I want to mention. Is there any more for this topic at all, before I move quickly? No? Good.
Mike, just a comment?
John?
Again, I am in support of this moving. I think one of the things that we are recognizing as we've been vaulted into the technology end of it, that we have to be mindful of the support staff and balancing that. Because what's the point of having all the technology if we can't utilize it? And in the past, we've always buy these programs, and then they never get used to capacity. So even though we might be spending a little money, we're actually going to be saving money if we can more efficiently use and provide service for our staff and students. So I think this is a good move. And if Peter could let his staff know that we do recognize the tremendous effort that has been put onto them with very limited resources in these times. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
So just a couple of new business items. Maybe Mr. McQ, you can comment this too. The request for waiver by SED to the feds about state assessments. You know, I mean, I think, you know, you sent the email out to the community for comment thoughts. Jim?
You know, what I would say is that, you know, it's been a constant year of, let's wait and see. Tremendous amount of planning goes into the three-through-eight assessments. You did see one of the choices also included the Regents. It's a really fine line. We heard a lot back from our folks that, you know, were here to serve. We've heard from our parents and our students that, you know, once they canceled those Regents, the student interest and effort dissipated quite a bit. So, you know, there's a fine line. We really held our grading policies and put them into full effect for this year. And we are really focused in on the essential standards and content and really pushing our kids. And so there's a fine line there, you know? They come out and make that announcement, you know, there's going to be an impact. However, when you look at that issue a little more globally, you know, we take it for granted that we've been able to remain in this hybrid. We've been able to have two in-person days a week. And there are districts that haven't had any in-person learning time right within the CAP region. Look at districts that have had multiple closures for weeks at a time. So, you know, that impacts everything. So when you're looking for equity, it's an issue. I'm not sure if there's a correct answer to...
Yep, thanks for that, Mr. Simons?
The other issue is the State Education Department does not have a computer-based testing
Right.
program that has worked real well on the scale that we would be required to do it. I mean, there have been grade levels piloting it over the last few years, entire schools piloting it. But it hasn't really ever been tested to do with full capacity with all of the students taking it at once. And then we would worry about validity and reliability regarding the test results.
Right.
So the other piece to it is the three-through-eight testing would require the scheduling to be done very differently. Because if it can only be done in person, we'd have to have multiple test days, more so than we do now at each grade level to bring the small groups of students in to take the test. And that would be logistically difficult. Not impossible, but logistically difficult.
Yep, yep. I understand the challenges, but I think what Mr. McQ said too, the engagement level of our kids at the middle and high school level is a concern. We've done a lot to prepare our students. I just would like to make sure people weigh in on this issue. It's important, critical, because it does, it's going to impact our kids. Some will breathe a sigh of relief, but others will be pretty disappointed because they've been putting a ton of effort into our work so far this year. The other thing is, just on winter sports, you know, we may be needing a special meeting next week. I think Mr. Simons had mentioned that. I just want to just put that out there, that the board will try to meet again as soon as we have more information about winter sports and coaches and, you know, those kinds of things. So we may have to revisit this issue as things progress. And maybe have to have a special meeting next week to discuss some of those things. So I just want to put that on the radar and the community's radar for the future. With that, we have public forum number two, Ms. Wager, anything?
No, no public comments.
No public comments? Oh, okay. Board forum number two, I'll start in the in-person, folks. Deanna? You're good, Frank?
Good.
He's good. On the big screen, Mr. Dunn, you're on my left. Thumbs up. Mark?
Just Policy Committee. Jeff, we're still waiting on that one policy from the end of last year, I believe.
Are you talking about the residency policy and non-resident attendance?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, I have several sample policies that I want to review, send out to the board, and then I want to have a meeting. There are some that I gathered from New York State School Boards Association, some from other districts. And I wanted to have a virtual meeting to review them and discuss them, given the topic. So it's still on my radar to do, and we will be doing it, so.
Thanks, Mark. Jennifer? You good? My right, Michelle? Good. Joanne? Good. Kathleen? Good. Did I give everybody? I think so, one, two, three, four, yep. And myself. I don't have anything. I think I've said enough tonight. So we do have need for an executive session for purposes of update on collective bargaining and personnel. We will take five minutes. Peter's going to send the link to the board members. And I just want to thank everybody for the participation and the hard work that's going in. And we'll have an update soon. So have a great night, and board members, we'll be back here in five. Thank you.